We have our end of the presentation blessed by Councilman John Greaves. I'd like to ask Alan, if you will.
Yes, sir, thank you. Hold our head please. Lord, I thank you for this day and for this opportunity. Lord, I want to say a special blessing and thankfulness for our staff and just for any of this crew, Lord, that you will encourage and bless them and direct them in each day, Lord, and that these vacancies that they have, you'll bring the right person for the right job. Lord, I pray that you just put our team and this council together, Lord, and put us in a positive mental and moral and socially attitude that we can work together and make our community better. Lord, I pray that we work in a way that pleases you. And I ask that you give us the wisdom and understanding as we work through these issues facing our community. Lord, I pray that you would bless and favor our efforts in Christ's name.
Thank you, Mr. Greaves. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I see we have a lot of young people here today. How many of you have something that needs to be signed after the council meeting? You love democracy, right? You could do so immediately following the meeting. Just come up and we'll sign it and take care of it for you, okay? Now, whose class is you in? Can y'all handle it? Yeah, I know. Absolutely. Goodness, so we'll move down to agenda item three, this recognition presentation. Mr. Woody, if you will, come forward.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. It's good to see you all again.
It feels like never.
Welcome all again. My name is Curtis Lee and I'm a part of the special with the U.S. Census Bureau. And it's my job to help the city, county, and state governments and try to make sure that everyone in our community get counted on the upcoming 2020. The 2020 Census Bureau will be adopted on April 1, 2020. That is set to take. Again, for those of you who don't know, the Census is going to be online this year. And anyone who has a computer, smartphone, tablet, or whatever can actually go online at that point in time and compute the Census number. If you don't have the access for those online vehicles that you're able to dial your phone number and actually compute the Census, then in fact, the Census is going to reach out and touch people at least five times this time around. Once by online, then if you haven't responded, then you're going to get a mail-in mail. And then if you haven't responded by then, you're going to get a phone call. And if you haven't responded by then, then somebody's going to knock on your door. And then if you haven't responded by then, and this is for the people who take who walks in there, then there's going to be an hour of the line and you'll be going to be counted. But my job here is to tell you that the city leads to be counted. And I'm just delighted that the city council has agreed to work with the county and lead in theory to form a complete county board, which is focused on making sure that everybody is accounted and determined to be counted. I'm excited about that. I'm here to be your resource for information, tools, guidance, support, training, whatever you need to make sure that happens. And if I may, I'm just delighted to see these young people here. With your permission, I'd like to give them one of these cards.
What's all the importance for the U.S. Census? This is important for jobs?
Absolutely. Because...
You look like they want a job.
And these jobs are flexible, they're according to your schedule, and they pay pretty well. And they're just perfectly simple for college students, so they're not paying them.
Curtis, before you give them the cards out now, you told us this in the work session. Who is the least likely to fill out their census form?
Thank you. Well, let me ask you guys. Who do you think is the least likely to respond to the Census online? And the reason is because you all, or not you personally, but those in your age range don't seem to value the Census or know the importance of the Census or how it might impact you or your community. And the bottom line is $675 billion flows back into communities based on the count through the U.S. Census. And it impacts your representation, it impacts power, it impacts redistribution, everything about it, the economic, where the businesses locate, whether it starts having those slots for young kids, whether schools are built, whether you're in a trailer or in a brick building. All of this is determined by the U.S. Census count. So you have to be counted. Census is putting the typical countries on millennials on college students. And that's why I'm going to hand these cards out to you. I'm going to lift these.
Let the young people get the job, then be counted, okay? All right. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Woody.
That's, that's great.
Thank you. We really appreciate that. We'll move down to agenda item three D, which is a presentation on proclamation on October 2019 as domestic violence awareness month. And the proclamation reads as follows. A proclamation by the mayor and city council of Statesboro, Georgia, offering October 2019 as domestic violence awareness month. Whereas the crime of domestic violence violates an individual's privacy, dignity, security, and humanity due to the systematic use of physical, emotional, sexual, psychological, and economic control and/or abuse. And whereas domestic violence leaves an important imprint of fear and hostility, and whereas the problems of domestic violence are not confined to any group or groups of people, but across all economic, racial, affectual preferences and social barriers, thereby affecting society as a whole. And whereas in the city of Statesboro, adults and children are victims of violence each year. And whereas Statesboro City Council is committed to restoring the rights and freedom from fear in our communities. And whereas in our quest to impose sanctions on those who break the law for perpetuating violence, we must also meet the needs of victims of domestic violence and their children who often suffer great financial, physical, and psychological losses. And now therefore be bizarre that in recognition of the important work done by the domestic violence programs in cooperation with Safe Haven, Safe Haven, I, John McCall, mayor of the city of Statesboro, and on behalf of the entire city council, thus hereby proclaim the month of October 2019 as domestic violence awareness month. We urge all citizens, agencies, and businesses to work together as a team in our community through prevention, intervention, and educational programs to eliminate domestic violence and become a violence free community. In witness whereof, I have here to set my man and cause the seal of the city to be affixed this 15th day of October of the year of our Lord, 2019. You guys will? Lord, give us a brief discussion. Tell us who you are and so forth.
I'm thirty.
Raise the microphone. Go ahead.
All right, I'm going to take about thirty minutes of your time tonight. I just wanted to say thank you very much for recognizing this month is October for domestic violence awareness month. This is Lisa Brandon. She's the executive director of Safe Haven, and my name is Kim Billings. I'm so glad to see the Georgia Southern students and the college students. They are a big part of whom we help at Safe Haven. But we help people of all ages. Domestic violence affects everybody in the community, whether it's happening to you or not. And at Safe Haven, we offer a 26-bed facility. We also offer another outreach center that's located at 204 North College Street, where anybody can walk in at any time to receive services free of charge. We do assessment, safety planning, court accompaniment, protective orders. We also offer a safe place to stay, but the majority of people that we help never even stay there, even though we offer it. They're just like you and I, domestic violence. You never know who it affects. It can be anybody, just like your abuser can be anybody. So the fact that you guys would recognize it and stand up for it and be really good models is fantastic. And I wanted to say thank you to our law enforcement here, who is fabulous in referring people to us. And we just love to have you guys out and give you a tour. And thank you so much, Mayor, for being so supportive to us. We appreciate it. And thank you, city council. You guys have been fantastic, that's what we appreciate.
I'll take one more, sorry. Three, two, one.
All right, so we'll move down to agenda item C, employee of the quarter for the fourth quarter, Jeremy Hancock. Oh, there he is.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, State Commander, and guests. I'd like to introduce the fourth quarter, Jeremy Hancock. Fourth quarter Jeremy Hancock is a valued member of the city of Statesboro Police Department as well as the city of Statesboro. Sorry, sorry. Thank you. He was promoted since the nomination.
Just one more read for him?
Yes, one more read for why. He's an excellent candidate for fourth quarter. One of the ways Officer Hancock has kept the city safe happened on November 18, 2018. A female reported to the Statesboro Police Department that she had been walking down the street when an unknown male subject suddenly approached her and began groping and trying to kiss her. The victim was able to separate herself from the subject, who then asked for her number. The victim gave us a fake number, which she watched him write on a small round piece of paper. The next morning in roll call, she heard the description provided by the victim and immediately connected this description to a subject who had been reported as a suspicious subject two weeks earlier. He then assessed the suspicious subject's information and put together a photographic lineup, which he then showed the victim, and she positively identified the subject as her attacker. He then used that information to obtain a arrest warrant, and the subject was subsequently arrested. And he had this little paper with a fake number on him during the time of the incident, of the arrest, excuse me. And by doing this, as well checking on alibis and witnesses, he took someone off the street and was arrested for a sexual battery, and he kept the city more safe. So I'd like to thank you for everything that you're doing. And the council and American, uh, company.
Okay. All right, we'll move down to agenda item four, which is from the comments. Miss Lee, you know who signed up? All right, we move down to agenda item five, which is consideration of a motion to approve the consent agenda. Item A is approval of minutes from our October 1 call city council meeting, October executive session meeting, October 1 council minutes, as well as our executive session minutes. Item B is consideration of a motion to approve a traffic signal permit application with the Georgia Department of Transportation for State Route 24 and 162 West of Gray Street. And item F is consideration of a motion to approve grant right-of-way easement for accessory M E M C to run the metro line as over city-owned property on Lexington Chapel Road.
Before you add that motion, would you just give us an update on the, if you have, Mr. Penny, on the traffic signal decree? You don't, okay, I knew it. Just looking at it and see Jason's, so. All the playing, the votes are going, right? It's just been that way for a minute.
Is there a motion to approve?
Absolutely.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, let us move down to agenda item six, which is the second reading and consideration of a motion to approve orders 2019-10, orders regarding speed limit enforcement, losing speed sections provides.
Mayor, members of the council, and the last council meeting, we approved the first reading. Every three years, we have to submit a list of roads to GI in order for us to be able to use radar. And this is the second reading. If we recommend we approve so that we can submit an American side, so we can submit this to the state so we're legal and we can use radar for speed enforcement.
All right, is there any discussion by council? All right, seeing that there's no discussion by council, is there a motion to approve?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Let's show that agenda item six is passed, and we'll move down to agenda item seven, which is the public hearing, consideration of a motion to approve application for section six S72D exemptions to open containment Eagle Creek Brewing Brewing Company, 106 Savannah Avenue, Suite B, find your parents a weekend, October 18, 2019, from 8 until 11. All right, is there a motion to open the public hearing?
Absolutely.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, any issue with that? Chief Brown?
No issue.
Chief Brody?
No issue.
Okay.
No, Mayor.
All right, is there anyone here to speak for the request? Okay. Seeing as none, is there anyone here to speak against the request? Seeing that there is none, is there a motion to close?
Absolutely.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, is there a motion to approve?
Absolutely.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. We'll move down to agenda item eight, which is the public hearing and consideration of a motion to approve application 19-09-01. Josh Whitfield requests a variance from Article 15, Section 1509C, Table 6 of the Statesboro zoning ordinance regarding the internal illumination of building size and sign district four. To my understanding, is there a motion to table?
Well, Mr. Mayor, I talked with Senator Penny about this, and an internal variance by definition has a hardship requirement on it. And, you know, an internal illumination would be a preference. And so my suggestion is, in addition to tabling it that we direct came to actually amend the sign ordinance, Mr. Whitfield's not the only one that's come to me about internal illumination. And the last thing we want to do is have to do a variance on each person that wants to light up their window from the inside, right? You know, even if, even if folks are worried about the historic district, you look at pictures of the city thing, right? There are lights and neon and, you know, the paragon sign, and all kinds of stuff like that. So my suggestion would be to table this request and correct our city attorney to write up an ordinance that would change the sign ordinance and to allow this. And I know the sign ordinance has, Mr. Penny, and it gets looked at as well, and you noticed a few things, things that may need to be tweaked as well. So my suggestion would be to clean that up, modernize our sign ordinance, and go ahead and get it to the point where these guys can be approved for these types of signs by staff, as opposed to coming and getting a variance every single night. And in the vein of consistent, you know, consistent enforcement of rules, in that way we're not giving special preference to individuals instead of the the hard and fast rule that we've proposed.
All right, so what I'm going to do, I'm going to go ahead and open this up for a public hearing, because there is a couple of questions that's come up now. So is there a motion to open up a public hearing?
Absolutely.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. And, Mr. Penny, we're going to take a briefing based off of discussion from Councilman Boyer, but I do want to kind of segue into what do you, what does that, does this have a current project as a right now?
Well, by table, they wouldn't be able to illuminate that, they wouldn't be able to use that blue light illumination until staff has the opportunity to bring the ordinance back to, and so I wanted to just share from this standpoint. It's not, staff did not recommend approval of the variance. The planning board did recommend approval of the variance. However, again, it would be my presence to have the opportunity to have staff do the research and to amend the zoning ordinance so that we're not creating that variance, as Mr. Boyer said. It's not, no one's necessarily opposed to it. I have some folks who may have this concern that we have a historic downtown, although we don't have a local historic district. In this way, every merchant or owner of a building will be treated the same way with the immigration ordinance.
You don't want just one business to do it like their store brought up, and then the next person wants to do it, they get a variance, and the next person wants to do it. Let's just treat everybody the same.
Right, okay.
The other question would be time certainly.
Yeah.
So between now and the second even in November or the first of November?
So, and so correct me if I'm wrong, and came out thinking of you on this. If we go to the ordinance, round of orders, we'll have to go to a first and second reading. Is that correct?
That's correct, Mayor. So I could easily have, or we could easily have some presented for you all and that they were fit, and then have the first grade one with number 19.
Okay, all right. And so with that being said, that puts us a month out, about thirty days out. So that's a question that I have.
That's the exact question I have. Well, I appreciate what you're saying, and you could have thought that we did that before, and it was not done, and I think it's an absolute, indeed, because it seems like we've done this with signs throughout.
Yeah.
What I would like is the opportunity to...
Yeah, we're going to run down four lines. Yeah, we're going to run down four.
Before we, before we table, just because I want to understand the impact of this.
Yeah, exactly. Okay, so, Mr. Penny, there's no further discussion. We're going to the foreword again. Nope. All right, is there anyone here to speak for this?
Hey, my name's Joshua Dillon. I'm in agreement with what you're saying, for sure. And I think there's a route that we can do to satisfy the business owner to get open. We can construct a sign, a block or permit in an unilluminated fashion, get it signed up, so he can open, and we get these proper changes. Because I think, you know, we do signs at historic Savannah, Devil, and Charleston. There's consideration and thought process to how the sign is made, the design. It's not just because lighting or not. So I love going through this, and I'd love to be part of the solution if anybody does want us to be helped, be involved in our experience in working with other municipalities. I don't think we want to go to a forty-foot old chimney pile on site.
Yeah.
I almost made an argument. I think, you know, we got every kind of sign, plywood signs, very nice historic signs that downtown, and I think most of those is what it would look like. I think that's, especially for restaurants, what we're trying to get back to, if you can open at night, when it gets dark at six o'clock, the restaurant is open. So I think we can work through on this one to get it signed up with a permit, if the administration's fine with that, and try to work through this. I agree with you, it makes it very hard to ask for what to expect, what not to, and then looking next door, something different.
Yeah. All right, so I know council is going to have some more questions, so just stay right there. Is there anyone here to speak against? Seeing that there's no one here to speak against, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Absolutely.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, any questions by council?
Yep. I have any specific questions. I just maybe explaining exactly in detail that we have the email base that you sent up, maybe to the public. What you think Statesboro should do in the future, maybe?
I think what we're trying to do in downtown from the businesses, from West District, is really kind of breathe life back into downtown and bring back a lot of the unique, interesting businesses that made up downtown. We honestly struggle with restaurants downtown lately. And when you go to the surrounding communities, the unique restaurants have the unique signage to go along with it, have the character that fall into the types of buildings and places we're really going to bring down here. And having them have that marketing ability is just one tool to help them succeed downtown. Having where they look closed at six o'clock is not, doesn't make it easy for business or a restaurant that is open, you know, anywhere from nine to a lot of clock time.
All right, and so we appreciate your charging. So I want to ask this question for council. You got a question?
Yeah. Right now, if you want to put a sign on the outside of a building, put a sign up, and put lights on, shine out on the side, right?
Correct.
And this would be just have lights shining through the sign, right? And so from a, from a, what's the word, lighting pollution standpoint, the internally illuminated sign actually gives you a better view, yet at the same time, there's less extra illumination. You don't get that same bright shining on the traffic and shining into other windows and that kind of thing. So it's actually, from a lighting standpoint, it's actually a better lighting system than what we currently have, yeah.
More organic lighting.
More organic.
And there's many ways to internally illuminate a sign. So I think, you know, that tabling it and having this conversation is important because you can do a cheap plastic lens face that the whole face glows. And it produces a huge white light. You see that in the mall here, which is appropriate. You see those commercial type signs. The signs that we proposed already, with one following Bull and Barrel, same type setup, it's one of the old historical blade signs with some accent, LED backlighting that brings back that vintage look. So this isn't the first, this isn't the last. And so I think having this conversation, but more so than whether it's illuminator or not, I think that would be an easy game serving as the signs and, I think that would, you would think I would like that. But I think the character we're trying to bring is, if there is, in other municipalities, there's a historical review committee that reviews the signage to make sure that it is in line with what the intent is. There's a lot more roadblocks in place for somebody that's going to go through every time. But I think if we want to control that quality, so we don't get back to commercial signs, the blue model that we have, that were tall, huge, full of pile on faces. Everything that we propose is architecture that's outdated sign that has a routing of the street traffic, that has ambient halo lighting to it, and not a bright, direct face lighting.
Okay, so as a point of clarification, let's make sure council is on the same page. This business would not be adversely affected by us pushing it down a little bit just to get the correct ordinance?
I think they would, I hate to speak for a little bit, I'll sit there. I think getting a sign up should be a good idea. If we can go ahead and get one, then we get a sign up. And then he is very much on board with what we're talking about in this subject.
All right, so, so, so the ideal situation would be to have a motion to approve you guys and put a staff to go ahead and put together the ordinance for the up. So let me just feedback.
Counsel, what is your thought?
We could do that, approve some, and then decide what we're approving later?
No, we're approving the variance, and then we would vote to give a change.
Well, we're going to change.
Change the ordinance, so that way there wouldn't be any other.
So we don't have to go back to this anymore? That's fine?
Yeah, that's...
That's good? Okay.
That would give you the opportunity to build like you already got, and then we can take your example and use that. And you can use that as a craft and ordinance to change ordinance, so you're not going to go ahead.
All right, so, so I need the motions.
I will make the motion.
Hearing closed.
Yeah.
I'll make the motion to approve 19-09-11.
Is there a second? All right, is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Mayor, may I go ahead and make any secondary motion, try, or do you want to do the other?
Secondary motion in relation to?
To have a direct gain to change the sign.
Okay, go ahead.
You want me to do that?
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, Kane, you've heard what we said, so I'm just, uh, motion to direct our city attorney to, uh, update the sign ordinance to address internal illumination and some other issues that may be, uh, something strange.
Is there any far, farcinating on that, Mr. Kane?
If, if that's possible, yeah.
Alright, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Alright.
Kane, I would say that now that he's approved, you know, if you can't get them to then, do it ahead.
Kane, make it happen, right?
I'll do that.
Alright. Alright, so we got to the general item nine, public view and consideration of a motion to approve application, um, five nineteen dash oh nine dash oh two, Josh Goodfield, put the grant from Article fifteen, uh, section fifteen oh nine C, table six of the State For Zone Ordinance, regarding the maximum sign height allowed in sign district four, uh, is there a motion to open the public hearing?
Certainly.
Second.
Alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
Alright, um, Mr. Penny?
Mayor, member of the council, advocate again, Josh Goodfield, is Goodfield's sign, and he's requesting to install a building sign on the west elevation of Forest South Long Island Street for the existing loft apartments on the property which will be named the post. Table six of the State For Zone Ordinance was regulated signs in Central Business District, specifies that no building sign is allowed above the height of twelve feet. Opposed height for the subject sign is twenty-two feet. City Council has taken multiple variances in the Central Business District, uh, for buildingside above twelve feet. Further, all other conditions of this request to meet the requirements of the ordinance, with these reasons, staff recommends approval of this variance at the October first, two thousand nineteen, commission meeting, commission approved, uh, recommend approval of above five six. And we do have some pictures of the, of the people that go. That's the subject property, keep going, that's the property, keep going, keep going.
That, that's a bigger wall faces our city parking lot that is, uh, just across the people, but, uh, sure.
Thank you. Is there anyone here to speak for? Yeah, come on, man.
In, in this conversation, I think this is one of those things that, that we look at, when you read code, it says the max side height is twelve feet, and some of the entrances of these buildings are actually higher than twelve feet, to, to put a sign above a door, you're gonna have a lot of against this, like, we, we did one, I think, three months ago, same situation, and, uh, it delayed the opening of the business just to get this, this process or something, and I think it's, I mean, if, if, if the laws are on the second story, it's kind of a, it comes as a thing, but it's not really there, what it is, so, I think that involved this conversation that we're talking about is not just about how it would be perfect, this situation.
Alright, is there anyone here to speak against? Alright, seeing that there's no one to speak against, is there a motion to close the hearing?
Certainly.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any council discussion? Seeing that there's no council discussion, is there a motion to approve?
Certainly.
Is there?
Second.
All of them favor?
Aye.
Let, let us show that the general item nine has passed, we'll move to general item ten, which is consideration of a motion to approve the resolution twenty nineteen dash three four, a resolution waiving twenty twenty alcohol license renewal of late fees, and setting the twenty twenty alcohol beverage licenses fee.
Mayor, council, um, last council meeting on October first, y'all, um, y'all approved the amendment to chapter six, which is our alcohol, uh, ordinance, and, um, in that, it sets out the new, uh, license classifications, uh, package bar, bar, kitchen, event venue, low volume pub and restaurant. Uh, that was just put in place on October first, so I'm bringing this resolution forward today for two reasons, one did that, um, the way that that approved one, uh, is, is that late fees begin on November first, um, for the new license type, this other thing we did is we changed from the fiscal year to the calendar year for the alcoholic beverage licenses. So what this would do is this would weigh, and there are two tiers of, of late fees that are set up, there's the first one, and then there's the second one, and, uh, what this would do is this would push out the first phase, that it would be, fifth fee would be a late fee beginning on November first, what this resolution would do is it would push out so that there would be a grace period until December first for, uh, current licensees to go ahead and get that calendar year twenty twenty alcohol beverage license, and, uh, at that point, they would be, do before the December first, there would just be a one tier, um, late fee system where it would be in the amount of two hundred dollars. The second thing is, um, these are new license classifications, and also the other thing that the amendment did, is it streamlined so that it's no longer the alcoholic, the license fees are no longer based on whether or not the establishment sells, uh, distilled, uh, beer or wine, um, whichever one they're allowed to do under what ordinance, such as packaged establishments, gas stations, grocery stores, which is, would they be able to sell beer and wine here? And the same thing with, uh, with home premises consumption, they would be allowed to, um, they would be allowed to sell, um, distilled beer and wine as well, so that there'd be certain, certain charges, each one. Uh, what, back, um, back in October of last year, I got with, uh, Captain Winsky, who was at the time handling the alcohol enforcement for, for State For PD, and we just kind of looked on what the law enforcement resources would be for each of these establishments, 'cause they're, the law enforcement resources, they're gonna have to go to a, uh, bar, they're gonna be different than what goes into a restaurant, and they're certainly gonna be different than a low volume establishment, or an event venue that's only open on certain days, so, um, we did the most revenue neutral, uh, resol, uh, solution we could to it, and those, those license fees are set out in, uh, paragraph two of the resolution here, and this was, this, this is the best way for us to just kind of do this as a pilot, of course, we can revise these, uh, fees if, if we see that, the law enforcement resources are going to be, if we got it completely wrong, which I don't think we did, but we based it on the number of, um, establishments that we felt were falling in each category, and so the license fees are set out in the resolution, so for packaged establishments, it would be seven hundred, seventeen hundred fifty dollars. For bars, in bars with kitchens, it would be forty-three hundred, for event venues, twenty-five hundred, low volume establishment, seven hundred fifty dollars, pubs, fifty-six hundred dollars, and the restaurants, it would be twenty-eight hundred dollars, and, um, these would, um, these would be those licensed classifications that we now have in chapter six.
Thank you, Kane. Is there any discussion, um, from council?
The only one I have in particular, consider, well, personally, I'm trying to figure out which question I wanna ask. Um, low volume, why is that as high as it is, I mean, because they're, they're only looking at like a thousand dollars of sales margin?
It would, it would be.
Does that seem like a pretty high number considering the low volume?
Well, the low volume is a thousand dollars of wholesale deliveries per month on average, so it'd be twelve thousand dollars of wholesale deliveries in that big year. Um, of course, these numbers are only council discussion, and my implication is simply the numbers that are presented, and y'all, if y'all would like to change any of the, you know, certainly within your, your ride-in duties, that's Mayor's.
The idea for me, just to refresh your idea for the low volume, was for the hair salon to be able to serve a champagne with a haircut, or a, or a coffee shop to be able to have a couple of local beers, uh, and, you know, you know, a small fridge, but not be a bar, or, or even a restaurant, um, and so to me, that just numbers seem, that particular one seems a little bit high, and the only other question I had was for the, the Avery Center, you know, at some point, did they do want to create a license, so if they did, are they exempt from this somehow, or do, how does that work out, Kane, over there?
They, um, the Avery Center would still be allowed to get their six nonprofit events permits annually.
Right.
But if they want to, if y'all wanted to do a different, um, if y'all want to do a different, be scheduled for five oh one C three event venues, then that would certainly be something that I could amend as well, y'all'd like to make that, that license and be lower for five oh one C threes, like the Avery Center, then, um, that could certainly be put into the past resolution.
Sure, any other, any of those qualify under that category?
Not that I'm aware of.
What about the pack?
Bloodbox Deager?
Oh, that's Avery Center.
Yeah, what, what is the other one?
Okay, yeah, that's right. What about the pack? Performing Arts Center on campus, we'll have a little discussion, so.
I don't believe that more arenas will allow them to sell on, on.
We can, we can procure it.
Right, that's just how they have to be catered, that's, they would just be limited to catered place like Paul's estate. So there would, I mean, they could certainly, I mean, in that way, they would not be limited to those six events per year that they would fall under with a nonprofit special permit, so, I mean, there, there's certainly, you know, we could do twelve fifty or a thousand for five oh one C three organized event venues, if that would play a role.
Do you have a number in mind for five oh one C three and the low volume?
I didn't for the Avery Center, the low volume, I was thinking four oh one, two four, about, I mean, not, you're gonna get a little less, but, like, again, you know, I, I just, it was, the idea was it, that, that judging, to that, like I said, with the hair test, with the massage, which is an ancillary, uh, it was ancillary to the service, so it's not the primary reason, or even the secondary reason, like a restaurant, the reason you go to a restaurant, and then maybe you get a beer, the reason you go to a bar, is you go to get a beer, the reason you go to a place to get a haircut, you know, a haircut, you know?
If that.
And, or a massage, and have a glass of champagne with a couple of massages on the.
Right, but you're, forgive me, but you're seeing it from the consumer's perspective, whereas I, I've seen it compared to the others, like in my mind, the responsibility of serving alcohol, or the privilege of, or, or the, of serving the alcohol for these others is significantly higher, I, I think that's a carry for sixty-two dollars a month, essentially. And you can get that in a haircut, right, some of these ladies, they.
Well, these haircuts ain't too great.
You can make that up, I think that's very reasonable, personally.
Okay.
I mean, I think if, if we're gonna allow someone the privilege of serving alcohol in any capacity, they gotta put some, some skin in the game, and that, that's my personal opinion, and, and that's in fairness to the others, they still want they are.
And they would, e- even them, they would still, would need the insurance thing going back there.
So there's all the fees that's involved?
There would.
Those are fair times.
Is there any further discussion by council? Alright, seeing that there was none, is there a motion to approve?
Mr. Mayor? Uh, if we could move it forward, it would be for five oh one applicants for the event venue, it would be twelve fifty, is it that?
So we can put that as, you made it?
Yes.
Okay, so we need to get that, most, we need that motion with that.
What's, what's the fee for the low volume?
Low volume, it's a bad decision.
So we have a motion for the five oh one C three.
I believe that we accept the peace structure as presented with the amendment that had the five oh one C three, I said, I got, add twelve.
Alright, we have a motion.
Second.
Alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
Alright, let us show that the general item ten has passed, moving down to general item eleven, uh, consideration of a motion to approve resolution twenty nineteen dash thirty-five, a resolution, uh, requesting approval to apply for assistance to the fire, fire department for the city of State For Jordan. Mr. Penny?
Mayor, member of the council, uh, we're asking authorization for the fire department to submit the spraying application, uh, three projects that come to a total of hundred thousand dollars, uh, one of them would be for, uh, health screening, uh, to include advanced cancer detection, that's about twenty-five thousand dollars, the project request, we're looking for emergency medical technician training, uh, and that's, um, not for the, um, uh, first responders, but, uh, the attendance provide emergency medical services, uh, because a certain level of medical training is required as part of the technical rescue training program, and that project will be about fifty thousand dollars, and then there's a rope rescue technician training, uh, and, again, goal of training each employee to, um, do a rope technician, uh, and, and that is, uh, cost of about twenty-five thousand dollars, we're asking your authorization to approve that grant.
Thank you, Mr. Penny. Uh, is there any discussion by council?
I'm, I'm, I'm just glad that I think it definitely needed, so I definitely would be, hey, firefighters are doing excellent job of going training the key, so, well-trained, safe, uh, firefighter, one who can protect buildings, save lives.
So, is there no further discussion?
I was just gonna ask the chief, and chief, training is a big key, and I don't be ready to get it, two, yes.
Absolutely.
Alright, is there a motion to approve?
Certainly.
Quick second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Alright, we move down to general item twelve, this consideration of a motion to award contract to Misses Reform Technologies LLC in the amount of six hundred and forty-three thousand, seven hundred and ninety-two dollars and twenty cents, to provide rehabilitation services for apartment eighty-eight hundred feet, a sanitary sewer, sewer main. This project is funded and bought by the twenty twenty capital improvement budget, W W dash fourteen, with funds coming from system revenues and twenty thirteen allowance.
Mr. Penny? Mayor, I don't know that, and I have a lot more, basically, what we need to do is we need to, um, blind the sewer line, and, and that's what this will do.
Thank you, Mr. Penny. Alright, is there any discussion by council?
Just one quick question for Steve, Ed, I know we've done this on pipes, like under Savannah, I believe is one, is there, have you guys done any studies to, to see the impact of it?
Steve, I'll need you to come.
Come on down.
Steve, options come to you, um, we have done several projects prior to this, back to last year, about this time we agreed, and did work for similar amount of money, similar amount of footage, um, it is very cost-effective compared to the local cut, dig up and replace, uh, it has a similar lifespan of, of a year high. Fifty, sixty years, we should get that many years out of it, and so, uh, it is very costly to play through, to, 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 to pressure the system.
And, and that was my question, is, is there any gauge on how much that's affecting the inflow, or is it target, does it reduce the system wide?
Yeah, it's very hard to tell, there's not any going in, not now, because of the rainy material, so we're great, I mean, we're having wood, put it in and wait for the rain, and then make the termination, but, uh, we can know that it has significant impact, we can see that just from rainy, rainy months to dry months, and we can see a four million gallon a day flux of restroom in our flow, basically purely on groundwater conditions, and that's very valuable capacity in the system and kind of treatment.
But I guess the older they get, the more they leak, I don't know.
About the older they get, the worse.
Thank you, Mr. Penny. Is there a motion to approve?
Certainly.
Alright, all of them favor?
Aye.
Uh, question, let's introduce the general item thirteen, which is public business by city council, is there any other business by city council? Saying that there is none, I'll remove the city manager comments, any comments by city manager?
Mayor has no comment.
Alright, thank you, move down to public comments, any comments from the public? Alright, seeing that there's no public, uh, no comments from the public, um, students at this time, um, we're getting ready to launch on the executive session, so when we get finished, you can come forward, okay? Um, is there consideration of a motion to enter to executive session to discuss personnel, and potential litigation, and according to risk, OCGA fifty-nine fourteen dash forty.
Hey, you have anything?
We did, we took. Personal.
Alright, is there a second?
Yeah, what you say?
All of them favor? Thank you, you do want to go to executive session?
Salute.
All of them favor?
Aye.
Alright, no action was taken during executive session, is there consideration of a motion to adjourn?
Salute.
Is there a second?
Second.
All of them favor?
Aye.
Alright, thank you, and good night, space.